Good, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm sure by now the governing body, as well as yourself, is aware that last week Haddon Township voted commissioners noted not to continue with the Colonial Alliance along with their $23,500 share that they were responsible for. In light of that, does that change where Oakland is?
We haven't discussed it and it's the last item for tonight, so we can't officially say any comments because we haven't said anything.
Never really said.
I haven't reported anything to the governing body because I have found out more information, but it's item H7H and nobody knows about it yet. And I wasn't doing anything behind the scenes. I wanted it to be all in front of a public meeting, so.
When the first time the RFP went out, well, it went out before all the towns had a resolution, but still while you were in the response stage and the RFP was amended after Haddon Heights pulled out. Now that Haddon Township is out, does it now need to be, do RFP have to be put out again with the remaining interest of towns?
Well, if it's based on a monetary thing, then it's less than, the cost of it has changed less than 20%, so I don't believe that that has to.
Under the bond rules, they wouldn't, but under RFP, the rules are a little bit more flexible, but the question would become whether or not there would be determination by the people going, seeking the RFP as to whether or not it would be financially more feasible to go out for it a different bid or to, you know, just financially feasible to go out for another bid.
So, repeat the question? So, did I answer the question?
It was answered, that you don't have to go out.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I didn't.
I guess you'll wait to the end. I also want to, you know, commend this town for hiring a chief and for, you know, I assume you have respect for your chief, you respect the position of a chief of police, unlike your counterpart Mayor Casco, so thank you, Mayor.
Sure. You said we will be opening up to the end, too, if you're able to get back.
Thank you.
But if the legs are off. I'll talk about the stuff that we say we're looking to do right now. Let me give you the update on everything right now. So, Haddon Township dropped out. Haddon Township stopped answering all of our phone calls about where they were with everything. And then we found out that they dropped out and they're doing it, I think the reason being was budgetary issues. So, the behind the scenes thing is they're concerned that if they get into the alliance, they'll lose the lucrative contract they have with all of Bon Park. And it really isn't whether it's the best thing or not, is this is the best thing for Haddon Township. And to be honest with you, I have to respect that. I mean, everybody looks out for their own town, so I don't think it really, the study would have an effect on that, but maybe it would, who knows? So, they pulled out. We crunched the numbers, we called the company who we're looking to go with and they gave us a $2,000 discount for one less town. So, to go from six towns to five towns, it went $2,000 cheaper. It moves us from, it was like 10, 10.3?
13.
To 13 and some change if we decide that we wanted to go ahead with them. If Mount Ephraim pulls out, then it goes up to 15 and some change. There's a couple ways to look at it and you guys can come up with it, we'll discuss it. You know, I sent around the memo from, that was from the Trenton Times and that was where Sweeney's quoted as saying that he's gonna go with, he's gonna really push the 0% cap. Has everybody had a chance to read the article?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's really gonna push the cap. So, and with the guise of this will force a budget issue, a crunch, that'll force us into shared services. The whole reason why the alliance talked about shared services was we'd like to do it on our terms, not on somebody who doesn't understand what a small town is all about. And maybe he does, maybe he doesn't, when he lives in Gloucester in a development, that's not, that's not a, you know, small town, that's a development, you know? He doesn't understand us and as I said, these papers in your paper clips, we are more efficient and we have more shared services than anybody else in the state and we'd like to determine what's good for us, as Haddon Township did. You look at it a couple ways. One is can we afford the 13 or the 15? I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the numbers and crunch to see what we can do. The other issue, too, is, does it make sense anymore with Haddon Township? You're kind of, we're missing the donut hole. Geographically, Haddon Township's in the center of all the towns, it kind of surrounds Haddon Township. If they drop out, then does it make sense anymore? You know, I'm not sure. I mean, that's what the study would determine, whether it does make sense or not. And all I can say is if we don't do something, we are going to be forced to do something. And that's my point from the beginning is I would rather us do the study or any studies. You know, as I said, I still have not heard anything from the Chiefs Association. They have not come forth with any recommendations on what they say that we could do all the savings that they told us. You know, we've got tons of savings they could do. They haven't offered it, it's been over a year, so we can't wait at that point. But it all comes down, as I said, can we afford, can we afford to do it? And on the opposite hand, can we afford not to do it? And does it make sense now that Haddon Township's in? I don't have a recommendation one way, I'd kind of like to have the discussion to see what everybody feels about it.
Do we know, excuse me, whether the Chiefs have in fact met? Do we know?
Honestly, I don't. Too new in the association to know.
He hasn't even gone to the annual dinner yet.
I mean, I don't understand, I mean, it would seem to me, I'm an outsider looking in, but it would seem to me if I were a police chief, I would want to be preempted and do a survey, go in and see what we can do.
As I said, when this whole thing, the discussion came out and it was, you know, let's kind of talk about it amongst ourselves. I came out of the meeting, I called Chief Abate and said, listen, I went to that meeting over the county, the Chiefs were not included and I thought that that was the wrong way to go. Can you call Joe Eisenhardt? And we called Joe and I can say it now, I talked to Joe and said, listen, let me see where the group's going, I'll give you regular updates, just, because I wanted the Chiefs to know exactly what was going on. There's nothing, why anybody decided not to say anything, you know, I guess the other mayors felt that, and as a group, let's get our thoughts together before it gets public. I think sometimes bringing in people to help you develop your thoughts is just as, you know, just as good. So, you know, as I said, I met with the, I met with the Chiefs, I met with Joe Eisenhardt, I met with Joe Abate. And then later, met with Jack Knoll because Chief Eisenhardt retired, Jack took over and I met with those two guys. And they were the ones that said, you know, we feel that we could do the study on our own, which is a possibility. However, the thought is, is, you know, self-preservation at that time, you know, they're going to do things that aren't going to look at the big picture and maybe their own chiefs, you know, and whether that's a good idea or not, as I said, I'm still not one way or the other. The idea was, it was a non-binding study.
It seems to me that you're looking at two issues with the Chiefs. Theoretically, you're almost asking them how to terminate the positions and I don't know who's actually gonna do that. Secondly, you know, are you asking the Chiefs about rational solutions to have shared services to bring savings? I think that's possible, but I just don't think that's practical, that you're gonna have a group of people come together and sit down and talk about how they're gonna get rid of themselves.
I agree with that, I think that's true. Coach, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that would never have, I would assume if I were a group of folks that were beating at the behest of the governing bodies, I would try to find out ways, yeah, not to reduce my own, my own people, but again, ways to share services that would be more effective and give us a more streamlined police department. But, no, I agree, I mean, right, nobody's gonna sit there and have a discussion of how they can make themselves obsolete.
That was the reason why the outside consultant, to see that from above, you know, nobody's gonna want to do that, but if you look at it from above, and as he said, that was the catalyst of the whole discussion. Is that the end-all? Maybe not. I mean, you know, people equate it to, what did I hear this week? Somebody said it was the Cherry Hill study, like we were trying to beat Cherry Hill. Well, we're not. We just say that from a size and manpower and whatnot, it equates to that. But there are different, you know, there are differences between Cherry Hill and seven towns. There's seven public safety directors, that whole new committee would have to be set up, there'd be a lot of logistics and when you look at it all, it just might not be cost-effective.
Might not be.
But we have to look at everything and the thought is that, well, we, and this is the other quote that I heard was, we already do shared services. Well, apparently it's not enough, we need to do more, we need to see, we need to, it's almost to the point where it might be.
Well, that just gets to the point. When is enough enough? I mean, we literally do our best, I mean, we look at alternative energy resources, I mean, we're Oakland, we try to get blood from a rock. So, it's not that we have a lot of fat here and everybody understands the fact about trying to save money and trying to produce the best for the weekend for our citizens and the people to come in and out of it down. But there has to be a line drawn that, that we don't feel like we're being blackmailed.
But we are, I mean, that's the point, I mean, you know, I can't technically say that, but they can do whatever they want.
According to this S2, the punishment is, if we lose the state aid, is the amount that we would have saved. I remember when we, the whole talk about the county police force was going up and we talked about our state aid, I believe that was about $43,000. We had no problem.
That's just the one part, the only, we were discussing.
There's more state aid than that.
There's that, that state aid, but there's also the energy receipts and all that, which are quite substantial.
Right.
Are they talking about that state aid? We don't know.
So, when does it end?
Exactly.
I agree, Ron, and here's the other thing to it, and we've had this discussion today to say that I need to make a call to our legislators because, first off, you know, believe in everything you read in the newspapers, you know? It's only retrospect that do that, but the, the truth of the matter is, is are we worrying about something that, when they look at us as Oakland, you know, they make these broad statements, but there are towns out there that do not even, you know, Haddon Field never had a shared service until, you know, last year, that was their first shared service and they didn't have to do it. You know, we've got into the 40s now, so.
And I think this town, this council can hang their hats at the end of the day that we work diligently for shared services. If the state comes in and says that we haven't done enough and they turn their nose up on us, well then, I'd have to say so be it.
You know, I'd be an old voice guy before I got thrown out of that one, it was to say that, you know, I'd like to be prepared, I'd like to say that it's on our terms and that's the really reason why I've been looking at some of these things.
And I would understand that.
There are other shared services that we look at, but when you look at the police budgets, you know, they're the largest chunk of every budget in every town, you know, and I don't think they're the big fat cow. I think every department has really narrowed down their budgets in the last few years. I know the contract negotiations that I went through, I mean, we looked at a lot of things and we narrowed stuff down to try to be more sustainable, changing the brackets and we've done a lot of this stuff.
It seems to me what we, if this thing's passed and it goes through, you're sending out for a proposal on a company's hypothetical solution. So, with that said, I kind of did my own. If we took Mark and say he was the guy, it seems to me that two things are gonna have to happen. If he slides up, you're still gonna have to have a sector boss of this town. And if that's true, you would think in a pyramid effect that everybody would come up. So, you're gonna have to hire.
Well, that's why I say, I mean.
Or he's talking about not hiring and then we're down a person.
You can talk about it on both sides, but until you see it in black and white and you need to see that.
Well, Mayor, before, I agree with it and it's a tough thing that we have to come through, like, that's, I guess that's my point is, do we want to invest this money to go through a report that we kind of have an idea that there's a lot to it?
But you're only thinking about one aspect of the entire report. You're focusing on that we're looking to eliminate Chiefs and it's not. It's through administrative efficiencies, all of the administrative efficiencies. Everybody seems to focus on this one thing. I mean, I think Oakland has committed itself by bringing on a chief with a four-year contract, soon, we'll talk about that later, but the, you know, whether, why would we not appoint a chief when the study hasn't been done? We have to look at for ourselves, right? So, we as a town feel that this is the way we need to go. Before any decisions are made in a non-binding study, you know, we'd like to see that evaluated and then we can determine what we want to do, but in the meantime, you know, our commitment's to the chief and the police department and it's always to the police department. The study has never talked about merging police departments, this has never been part of the study, ever. The rank and file, people want to know their police officers, he was a police officer, understand that. I mean, once people get to recognizing, I think everybody, I grew up in town and fortunately I always knew the police officers for a good reason, you know?
The cost of the study certainly concern me. I mean, I said that before, it's a concern and now looking at even more, 13, 15. I mean, I understand your point about, you know, to go over it and it could save us money. Is it gonna save us $10,000, $13,000, $15,000? Are we gonna get that back in a year?
What's the payback? I'm not sure. But you say in a year, I mean, if you do something efficiency-wise, it's exponential, you know, you continue to save it year after year after year. So, it's not a one-shot deal, this is a one-shot to do it. This is the year because of some jockeying around with, you know, a chief is retired, there's some extra money, we have the potential, we got the sign done last year.
I just don't, and I understand that.
Yeah.
But I think that $10,000, $13,000, $15,000 could go somewhere else. I mean, Haddon Township pulling out is a concern, tip, because it's a big.
So, I ask, so I'll ask everybody here to say then, it's easy to say no. What is your idea to get us to the next level? Where do you see a savings? Now, I sit with the mayors and I recommend that you guys sit and think about these ideas and bring them to council and I can bring them to these mayor's meetings, but where else do you see savings or how do you see, how do you think to achieve this without studying it? I mean, nothing happens, this is government, nothing happens fast.
Yeah, but there's hidden, there's hidden expenses in here that I'm afraid of.
What's a hidden expense? You, how much contract you signed, you pay it.
Negative. Some of the research that I was doing on this subject, they talked about the suits between the collective bargaining agencies and the towns. It didn't go over smoothly. I would encourage everyone, before we go to a vote, is to Google the S2 legislation and do some research.
This is outside of S2 here, I'm talking about the study itself.
Is it?
Well, the study itself is a.
S2, S2 is what's forcing us to do this, is the blackmail, if you will.
Right.
It's the thing that's drawing us to the table. If there was no, if there was no cause and effect, then we may not be doing this.
So, let's take a step back and say, because I'd like to have a conversation to say, has everybody read the RFP? Okay. Did you have any, did you have any issues with the RFP? Because I'll go get the RFP and we'll go online, I can buy online, I don't mind doing it. And we did that with the Chiefs, we gave them the RFP and the only thing that came back to us was that the only problem that the Chiefs Association had was the availability, and you were in the meeting on this one, the availability of the.
Internal affairs files.
Yeah, the internal affairs files. And we, I think we changed, we decided that we would change the language to say that any files I as a, as a, somebody from the public had access to, not even as a councilperson, but as a public, which are all public, which they do not have the ability to get access to those files, is what they would have. So, they would not get internal, they could not get personnel, something like that. This is whoever did the study for this.
Okay, right, yeah, sure.
That was the only, the only thing that the Chiefs Association said that they had for. Everything else, they said no, looks fine.
I think before we get kind of decision to, it's already grown from 10 to 13. How many other towns are still?
So, right now, there's five, it could go.
I don't, if you need to know that number.
No, so the other ones, I believe, have a verbal commitment. I know Haddon Field has, you cannot, because Haddon Field has already said that they're going to, or go with the study. Haddon Township has, I believe Audubon has their meeting tomorrow night.
Just wondering if Haddon Township's new boot scares other towns, but I don't know, I'm just.
No, I mean, we all, we all had a teleconference the other day to talk about it, you know, to say, bring it to your councils, have the discussion and that's why we're having this.
When you mentioned Mount Ephraim, was it just for, just to give us an idea number-wise? Because you said it would be 15 if Mount Ephraim was out.
So, Mount Ephraim has always had a budget issue and what the other towns, Haddon Township, well, not Haddon Township, it was Haddon Field and Collingswood agreed to defer their payment of the study over three years. And we could do that, too. We could, the other town said, well, we can, to them, they could pick up the money and we could pay it over three years instead of the one lump, knowing that our budget has it available now and it does, it's in there. Jerry hasn't cut it yet, but it soon will. But, you know, Mount Ephraim is still on the fence. I mean, it is tough for them, they're even in a tighter budget crunch than we are, so they haven't given official one side or the other. So, that's why I said if it was with us and Mount Ephraim, it'd be around 13. If Mount Ephraim drops out, it goes to 15. The other towns, Audubon, Collingswood and Haddon Field, I think that's all that's left there, they're committed to the study from what I know. I mean, but you'll have to wait for the ones who haven't officially voted on it to come out with theirs. This was just all off the record. Didn't we get lost?
No, no. No lost, obviously it's not an easy decision. I just think that, I believe that through some of the research that I've done, I think there's gonna be more costs that are gonna be out there other than the $8,000 to $13,000. I go back to your point where you said it's nice to grow up in a town where you kind of know all your officers and your public, Department of Public Works officers. Okay, what about the chief? You know, that's a part of your community, that person who's a part of this community and I don't mean any disrespect to any other chief that is a part of their community, but they're a stakeholder. Mark's a stakeholder, he's been here for what, 17, 18 years? He is a stakeholder in this town. He knows numerous people, people know, trust him.
He'd know even more people, he's got seven towns under his roof. So, I mean, you could argue it back and forth.
Well, you can and that's what we're doing. And he's also gonna have seven mayors to deal with, which is gonna be difficult.
Well, as I said, you're still focusing on the fact that this is all about the Chiefs, only the Chiefs. And this is other, if you're only looking at that, you know, what if that's taken off the table? I mean, you know, we could agree that whatever comes out on that, we decide that we weren't gonna go with that, but you still have to look at all the administrative, other administrative issues. I'd love for the Chiefs to come back and help us and do this and come up with, as I said, I had one guy who's.
So, you're right and if they're being stubborn about.
Coming around with this or, you know, we gotta give.
We gotta get them, get back here and sit down and try to figure, what are the other things that we could share? That's a great question.
See, I think that, you know, a lot of.
Before we have to expend money, maybe add employees or delete employees in the future, is there something that we can do that would be more prudent to the towns and our economic situations right now?
I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know what I don't know. I think that's the thing, is to be educated about this, of what we don't know. You know, I know a lot about planning and zoning because I did it for a long time. I know a lot about buildings and grounds because I'm an architect. I avoided the police department because I was afraid that they would get tickets if I ticked them off, you know? So, I, just kidding. Yeah.
Well, the only, you're right.
I didn't want to get into that because, you know, that was a well-run machine and I didn't, but to be honest with you, you have to look at everything, you know? And that's the reason why. I mean, as a police officer, I can see why you might feel a little bit of, you know, well, you're stepping in my pond, you know? But as a councilperson, you have to put on the other side and say, I gotta look at it.
And I think I've done that on both.
And you have, yeah. We have to look at it from every angle. And I'm not accusing you of that way.
No.
You know, I get it from both sides.
How do you feel, or anybody, if now, if we were down to four, if Mount Ephraim, if we kind of know that Mount Ephraim could be iffy, like, let's just say if Mount Ephraim does go out, then there's four of us out, do you, like, I want to know, do you feel it would be that effective to still go four? I mean, then you're only talking about us, Audubon, Collingswood, Haddon Field at that point.
I can tell you, I mean, as soon as Haddon Township dropped out, I was concerned because of the location factor. I mean, you guys are the hole in the donut, so to speak, you know?
But you know what's funny? If we don't go with the, if we don't go with the RFP and put a, isn't the spirit of this, try to come together and save where we can? So, I wouldn't say, let's just scrap the whole thing and say to hell with it.
Right.
Okay, we're not going with the big plan, but we're still going to go with our base idea of how can these towns come together and is there a way to utilize each other's resources in a way that is beneficial to the public in a matter of safety, that there's no loss in safety and there might be potentially a decent economic gain in there, too. So, I wouldn't say just give up on this. I still think that, you know, the alliance and the Chiefs, it'd be real nice if we got together and at least went with that.
Yeah, I think the other thing, too, as I wanted to say about the alliance is, you know, it's kind of like a dirty word because we're trying to do this thing with the police departments, but there's a lot of good things that could be done and if this isn't one of them and it doesn't work, then by all means, I'm just bringing the information back. I mean, we have to do it as a.
Granted, sometimes you don't shoot the message per carrier, so.
No, that's why, that's why.
You gotta pay your big bucks.
There was even something to Protoponce that I didn't even share in, like, about uniforms. I mean, even if you start even lowering, I mean, I know we could come back with the Chiefs, but like, things, if we just look at little things and the towns do communicate.
Hey, it's, like, I don't hold it personally if you guys say that you don't want to go with the study. Trust me, I don't. I mean, I will still continue to fight for, for savings. I mean, we have to look for efficiency and that's what it is. And if it's not with this study, because now at this point.
We've done this as a town.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and I'm okay with that to say that, you know, we as a council decided this, you know, we bring the idea back. If it's not good now because other people have jumped, doesn't mean that we still can't try to meet with the Chiefs Association, we still can't look at some of these things. I'm okay with that. I mean, as I said, I'm not forcing this. I've been honest with our police department and said everything, I think I met with you guys with the police rank and file. I know I officially met like two years ago or a year and a half ago when it first came out, but nothing has really happened with it, so I haven't tried to hide anything and I've been very open with you guys about it. Nothing gets decided in this without each of the mayors going back and putting into a vote and having a discussion, so this is the way it's supposed to work.
What's the real negative consequence? Like, if you're saying threatening, stating, cut, whatever, I mean, what's, is that gonna be a number that's so large where it's gonna like sink, I mean, do we know that? Do we know the numbers? They put us at 46,000, but there's other numbers.
So, it's 43 for the current state aid, which is two cents right now or three?
It's actually on the tax.
It's three cents on the tax, I think, on that one right now. Yeah, because they always, they have to put it on.
They have to put it on the tax.
But it's the energy receipts that are a lot that we don't see, which, you know, that might be quarter of a million?
It's a lot.
Is that different, is that different from what's here? Because right here, it says the penalty would be for the state aid that's lost in the amount that we would have saved. I'm assuming that.
Spirit of the article that I.
Yeah, but you're only going after one thing. I could say.
You could say.
You know, when they say mergers and shared service, are they mean mergers like the merger they talked about Princeton and Princeton Junction?
Yes, that is what they're referring to, isn't it?
Right, so, and that's like a huge merger. I mean, that's like merging towns. You know, Oconom, maybe that's our next town, you know?
What is that? I'm sorry.
I feel that they could say into a lot of things. I feel we could go and do this study and they can still come in and say, oh, well, I mean.
They could, they could.
Whatever we do, what we want to do, whether you go forth and do this regardless.
I like to, you know, reach out to the legislators and say, listen, how far are they going to go? Because what I've said before, too, is, you know, they are saying this, but do they mean us? I mean, look at how far we are above everybody else with shared services to begin with. So I'm not sure. You know, they might look at us and say, well, you guys, don't worry about it, you know? But my guess is...
Here, are they going to come down and count everybody's shared service and say, you have enough?
Trust me, when I go to it, I will bring a copy of the binder, and it's one of the thicker ones that Bonnie has, that has all the shared services, because we keep track of them. So, I mean, there's other shared services. As I said, we as the Alliance have talked about, one thing we're going to look at is vehicle maintenance. And this kind of goes beyond just the police thing. But just to throw it out there, you know, right now, all the seven towns, I think there's only... Two towns that have actual mechanics, official mechanics? Not always what used to. There's networks for Audubon. I think Haddon Township has one. I don't think Haddonfield has one anymore. We don't have one. Mount Efron doesn't have one. You know, we were using Bellmar's shared service, and they got so busy that they couldn't do it anymore. So we, you know, they stopped doing it because they weren't doing their own vehicles. So one of the things we looked at is looking at the cost of what we've all done for maintenance. And can we come up with a seven-town alliance to get a maintenance group together? And that's what they can do. I mean, the guy in Audubon fixes a lot of any kind of, I guess, more car side of it. We're looking at another guy who, who he brings in, who does truck and welding. And he can work on any big stuff. He works at a company that works on million-dollar diesel machines, and he's certified and all that. So we're looking at to see, facility-wise, who could do it, where could it be done? What would the cost benefit being all over seven towns to say that if each of us is spending $20,000 on this and really parts-wise, it's only $6,000, does that justify doing something internally rather than going outside? I'm not sure. We'll do that internal study. I'm not going to say we're going to do, the reason why I think we looked at having an outside firm do the police study is that it's very complicated when you get into police. I'm not saying the mechanics aren't complicated. I don't want to offend anybody. But it's a little bit more of the numbers, doing some number crunching and doing some facility crunching. So that would be like creating something new. But that's what we're looking at, you know, what are the other opportunities? We're going to look at them all.
Sure.
So just to say that, and in the conversation, it was Mayor Ward from Audubon who said, hey, I don't want to get, I don't want to get everything derailed, the good things that we're doing from these seven towns, by saying if this one didn't work, you know, that means we're going to stop looking at stuff. And he brought back up that point, and I think that's a great point. And we should continue to look. I think we have an upcoming meeting, I'm not sure exactly when, but, you know, we're going to continue these discussions. So if this one isn't it, then maybe not once.
That's fine, and, you know, I'm going to end my little rant, I guess.
I don't think it's going to...
Again, I know everyone has been reading and has been looking into the RFPs. And there was the old, or the old RFP that went out, and I think it was in 1980. We had that. If you Google this, it's a little bit more reading, you know, maybe half hour more out of your time. I really found some interesting things also on that. Just to give you guys a, give the council some more facts of what's been happening. They're not just blocks from regular people, they're blocks from mayors from other towns that have done this. And they have, they've had some interesting thoughts.
What was the year on it?
Either study is...
1990.
This was just from October.
No, 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 so the study that Ron's talking about...
Oh, the old study? That was, yeah. It was Collingswood, Woodland Township, I think. And that was from the 80s, mid-'80s, something like that?
So I have a copy of that study. I think it's on my desk.
I gave you a copy.
Yeah, yeah, I have a copy.
If anybody else needs it.
Yeah, there's a copy in there, we can talk together. Well, you just make the copy that's on my desk. You don't have to make the...
Yeah, it's a...
Copy to Men Township?
Yeah. Okay, so any other questions about Colonial Alliance? Any other discussions? I mean, to be honest with you, I'm not bringing it to a vote tonight. I want the specific numbers to see if Mount Efron is actually deciding to pull out or not before I will bring it to a vote. And that'll be next week in council. So I just want to talk about it beforehand. Before you make a decision one way or the other, let me find, get the final numbers. And thought with your heart, that's all I can ask.
Next week at council, meaning that's when we're going to be voting, or next week at council's when you're...
I will come back with the information. It'll, I mean, it's whatever we find, so I'll make sure that people have it by Friday. So they can think about it, sleep on it, do whatever you'd like, and then we'll talk about it on Tuesday.
Okay.
All right. So other discussion items, the last couple of meetings, we have not gone around the table. And I apologize about that. Okay, the meeting's now open to the public. If you have something to say, please state your name, your address.
Good evening. My name is Rick Dorensen from Haddon Heights.
And let me finish what I was saying.
Oh, thanks.
And then please state your, you know, never mind at this point, you can cut me off.
I apologize.
Go ahead.
From Haddon Heights, I'm a retired police officer. A couple of things I want you to think about. Number one...
I understand, I have to say this, too, is you're coming at this and how?
I'll give you some thoughts from what I heard tonight, some future thoughts for you, because I know you're looking at different things. So there's a couple of things going on. You talk about this company did this study, was proposing to do the study. They did the study in Princeton, am I correct?
Yes, they did.
They also recommended the chief of police in Princeton. He's fired. And they have numerous lawsuits against them. So something to look into and think about.
Why don't you expand on that, because that's...
Well, evidently, during the course of the merger, that was a complete merger of towns, which accomplished the police department. But evidently, there was the chief, they had two different chiefs. And they recommended bringing this one chief in as the chief of both towns. Well, there were problems with contracts up in Princeton. There was work problems, so there was lawsuits by the union against the chief. There was also some town problems with the chief, where issues were going on, where he was doing some things improper. So he's no longer the chief. And again, this was the guy that was recommended by the study. But more importantly, too, is that a four-month study on such a complicated matter, as you said, makes me wonder, is it really feasible, a four-month study? I mean, that makes me wonder, can it be done? Most of your studies on police mergers or combinations is 18 months. North Jersey...
I mean, where are you to say, and no offense to you, but, you know, I can do a six-week study, they can do a $7 billion facility anywhere in the world. So timing, what's your...
Well, you're looking, number one...
Are you uncomfortable, or you from your side? And as I said, I'm trying to be contentious, but...
If you look at the RFP, the RFP's not only talking administrative factors. The RFP's also looking at your crime stats, and they're looking at your traffic accidents. So that's not just administrative. That is also going to recommend probably manpower. And a key thing with manpower is if you take a guy and you're going to bring in a civilian director of public safety, which most likely won't be the chief, because you can't do a chief for a seven-town because of civil service rules and also Title 40A.
Who's civil service out of seven towns? None?
None of them now?
So, that's not an issue.
Okay, well, that's fine.
But it's just when you're going to say these things, I want you to say it so that you're just as educated as you expect. That's the big...
Who's going to sign your compromise?
I don't know, these are the things that...
Well, these are the things I want you to think about.
The study is going to develop. As I said, tell me what I don't know, these kind of things. We don't know them.
They might not know this.
Right.
Another thing is, when this guy takes over as a chief or a civilian director, if he's a chief and he's running day-to-day operations of the department, he walks in and says, geez, I need two guys over in Collingswood today. You can take them from your town, and you can't say anything about that. Where is that?
That might be the case.
It's true.
Yeah, it's true.
So you're losing the personalization of your towns, is something that's important.
It's very easy to say all these things that you're going to be losing. But once the thing is, you're focusing on the one thing that you want us to be afraid of, and that's the chief. And this study is more than just the chief.
I said that's more than the chief, this is also about your manpower, which none of the Colonial Alliance mayors have admitted to. Writing your RFP, it talks about manpower.
It talks about administrative manpower.
It talks about...
It's administrative.
It talks about traffic, it talks about crime.
It's administrative manpower.
So that's what you said.
So you're, if you...
I don't agree with that point of it. I really don't. I think it's more about manpower. And if you're talking about administrative manpower...
You're assuming...
I'm assuming, you're assuming that it's just about administrative. But we're not going to argue that point.
We wrote the RFP. You're in wrong something, you know?
The RFP was written twice.
The RFP was written the first time as a draft, right? And it got issued out for everybody to come. It was an outline form. And it was just put out there so that we could write stuff out. It officially went out, one time, not twice.
Moving forward on this, some of the complicated matters are going to be if they decide to go to hire one civilian director or a chief.
That's never even been said? So you're making the assumption you're actually already going to the conclusion of the study when we don't even know that yet?
Well, I'm saying they need...
We never even suggested that as part of the study.
If I could back up, I'm saying if they recommend making a civilian director or a chief, I did say that. Now, what happens to all your personnel policies? What happens to all your contracts? That becomes complicated. And again, you may need the study. I'm not saying you don't need the study. But what I'm saying is, too, you have a chief of police association who you're saying hasn't responded to you yet. Have we really sat down with them and said, guys, you got to get on the ball here and make a decision if you're going to...
So I have, and I've had lunch, and I've met with these guys. And as I said, they came back with the comments to the RFP were specifically related to access to information. That was it. We sat in a meeting with Joe Eisenhardt and Jack Knoll. And Jack Knoll, who's the parent. So Joe is coming in from a historical standpoint. I, just because he's retired, doesn't mean he doesn't have a wealth of information.
Absolutely not, he's a wealth of information. He did a study up in North Jersey, where they brought a company in to do a study on merger. I think it was Demerse or some towns up there. And Joe went in and evaluated the study and came up with about 20 or 30 different questions. And when he went back to the company, there's some of these questions, the company could actually answer the questions. So he decided against doing the merger. But nevertheless, each study company or study team is different. I find it curious that this whole Camden County thing that we talked about, Colonial Alliance, we talked about Camden County Metro, why is Woodland left out of this? If we talk about the state making us share services. The state's not forcing Woodland. They're not forcing anyone in Gloucester County to do shared services with police. And they're not forcing anyone in Boffent to do shared services with police. And I agree with you. What the shared services really mean, what are they talking about?
I don't know yet.
Exactly, exactly. What are you going to threaten to take away from us? I mean, you guys do a lot of shared services, am I right?
You do more than any other in the state.
Exactly, and that's why I'm saying, is it because Sweeney and his crew want to force us to become part of Camden County Metro? To finance it?
I have no clue.
Well, and that's the things that worry me, and I hope that we open our eyes and look at that.
You know, people, I will say that people have said this is a backdoor approach to somehow merge us with the county metro. You know, I've gone on record before, I was in that meeting and hammered Free Holder Capelli about, you know, this is supposed to be a new way to do law enforcement and a new paradigm. And I said, okay, so what is it? And I really didn't get an answer. And we all know that, you know, the resources are going to go where the issues are. Collingswood had, they merged with Woodland. All of the resources from Collingswood were spent over in Woodland. Where the seven towns that are talking are more the same demographics, the same type of crime, the same type of traffic. And that's the reason why we thought this was a good idea. Nobody's been interested in going towards the county. That's just, it's never been the study, it's been the accusation. But that's never what we've said.
Yeah, it's funny, the department I retired from, the state brought in someone to oversee the department, the chief had the answer to, didn't work, really didn't work. Just, I want you to think hard about this.
Well, we've done this here, chief.
You have a beautiful little town here.
Town?
I know you have, I remember, yeah. But you have a nice town here, you have a good chief there. I'm proud to say that, I've known him for a few years. That's got a good thing going here. Just think about it real hard, and that's all I ask.
And I appreciate that, and I think, you know, thinking about this, and it's nice to have people come in, but, you know, this is an Oakland issue, think about it from an Oakland side, from Haddon Heights.
Exactly, but you're right, you got to think about it from your own town. I love that.
To say what has to be right for Oakland, I mean, that's the official...
That's right.
That's the line.
And that's all I ask. Thank you, appreciate it.
No, no problem. You could just say your name and your address again, please, for the record.
Josh. Mayor, before I say a few things, one of the comments you had made during that discussion was that Haddon Township had backed out because they didn't want to lose, I'll quote, their lucrative deal with Audubon Park. Can I ask where you heard that from? Because I attended the commissary's meeting, had a discussion with the director of public safety. And during the meeting, I had a discussion...
It was a wild one, I overheard it over coffee. I mean, that's, it was an overheard conversation. There's no official documentation in where I heard it from. I don't necessarily recall exactly where or who said it.
So it's hearsay.
You could say it's hearsay, but I don't think I dreamed it, let's put it that way.
I was there at that meeting, did not hear that.
They're not going to come out and tell you that.
Yeah. No, they do have a shared service at Audubon Park.
They do.
And...
Used to be with Audubon.
If the state's...
And it was pretty lucrative for Audubon.
If the state's coming down and saying, shared services, well, they're to go. But it was very entertaining to listen to the discussion this evening. There was one in Heights, Haddonfield, never had a discussion. Same with Audubon, so at least you guys are talking to an extent. And, you know, I want to call out the two councils, Councilman Aaron. But correct me if I'm wrong, neither of you are the director of public safety. And I don't think I heard more than a few words, if not anything at all, from the director of public safety. And I'm curious where the director of public safety stands.
I believe I had a couple of comments, and money is one of the things that, I want to know what the final money factor is between what towns do not go in, what's the money going to be? Did we talk about threatening losing state aid, what would that number be? So I have a couple of things that I want to know what those numbers are.
Are you comfortable with spending 13 grand?
I don't know if it's 13 grand, I don't know if it's 15 grand.
Well, that's the minimum now that you'll be spending. Are you comfortable with that?
Well, I'd like to get through our budget meetings and see where we stand with all our budgets, like, the whole thing. So I really don't have a stance on that at this point in time.
The beauty of this is, we were all elected to make the decisions for the town. And that's what we do. We decide how the money is spent. And we discuss it, and that's why we have these meetings. I'm glad we're here for your entertainment, I mean...
In regards for the chiefs, and asking the chiefs, I believe Mayor Teague, I've had deals with him in the past, I think he's a pretty straightforward guy.
He's a great guy.
He pretty much came in and said, I've been asking the question about the chiefs. And why haven't we officially asked the chiefs? Why haven't we asked chiefs? Not the one-on-one things, why haven't we asked them?
Asked them what I'm saying?
I hear Mayor Cass was saying, well, if we ask the chiefs...
Clarify your question, what if we had not asked the chief? Because, as I say, with all these meetings, Randy's only hit maybe three of the meetings. So as in attendance-wise, how does he know what's been talking about?
To ask the chief about, you know, what can you come up with cost savings amongst yourselves? Take six months and come back and see what you come up with.
So since it's been over a year...
But the question still has not been officially asked from the chiefs.
It's, all I have to do is, you know, what do you say that has to...
But you're one mayor. I think all six members, all six mayors, seven mayors, should ask the chiefs. Make it official. Not just say, wow, you know what, we asked this in casual conversation for this and this.
Not casual conversation. Not casual conversation.
Back in December, Mayor Teague asked, well, have we asked the chiefs? Now, unless something changed in two months or three months, I think November, December, when Mayor Teague asked that question.
And when did he ask that question, in his meeting?
No, it was the mayor's meeting back in November, December, November.
That you were in?
I was not in.
Okay.
But I know what occurred.
And the January meeting is where the chiefs were once again asked, in the January meeting, what savings can you come up with? So I've asked the chiefs, I've asked the chiefs several times, and I've been the head person, so you don't do everything by committee where all seven people have to do it. We appoint somebody, that's how government works, it's called distributing authority and delegating. So I was delegated at that point to say, go talk to the chiefs. So I don't know why you don't, just because Randy doesn't remember it, why don't you think that I'm?
What did the chiefs say to you within the last sixty days?
They haven't come up with something, we haven't gotten anything from them. We haven't, I mean, at that meeting, they didn't really have any ideas.
Was there an agreement for them to come back to you with something?
There is a constant agreement, that this is an end, the end-all, sav-all, you didn't give us something, we're not listening. The conversation is always there. And whether we go, and this was agreed upon in that last meeting, was whether we go ahead with the study or not, we're still going to be talking to the Chiefs Association. They're still to the table, we're not throwing them out the door, we're not stopping talking to them, eventually, we're going to get something from them. And, I mean, we take it seriously, I think the Chiefs Association brings a lot to the table. Have we gotten started yet? It just doesn't seem that, it's been a slow burn on their side. It's no offense to them, but we just haven't seen it yet.
Maybe an act of faith to bring in negotiations where, or talks.
This is a discussion.
Talks where that are trustworthy, that are trustworthy.
So you already said that all politicians are corrupt, right? So I don't see why trustworthy, you did say that, and I don't see why you don't believe that any conversations that I have are trustworthy. I mean, you've already called me corrupt, so I don't understand why you're ever going to believe that any of the mayors are going to have a trustworthy conversation.
Well, I don't think, I think, I believe, we've spoke, there's a lack of, I think, trust between Chiefs Association and these mayors based off comments. That really was, when Jim Malley was out there during his five or six months, and when she was spinning it, where he created the Cherry Hill thing, which let's face it, it's nothing like Cherry Hill. And if you want to talk about Cherry Hill, it was the individual departments, it was the individual departments.
It's your opinion, it's your opinion that you come up with that.
It's my opinion that the individual departments, in those fire districts, were the ones who says, let's consolidate. Where did it start? It didn't start at the Board of Fire Commissioners level, it started at the bottom, it started.
What fire districts are you talking about?
Cherry Hill.
That was never part of our discussions, fire district, ever.
But you're talking about Cherry Hill consolidation, you're talking about, you're like Cherry Hill, Cherry Hill consolidation about fifteen years ago.
You never talked about Cherry Hill consolidation, ever, ever, the size that.
You, you, you.
You are twisting things around.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are, because you've never been in any of these conversations, and I have. So trust me when I say that conversation about Cherry Hill has only been.
About the size.
Only been about the size.
And I'm saying even, I'm saying before, you want to talk about size, okay?
Well, I don't mean to talk about size.
You want to talk about Cherry Hill, which Jim Malley has wanted to talk about, fifteen years ago, there was a consolidation of their fire districts.
But we're not talking about fire districts.
Listen, we're talking about, no, it's police and fire are different, but I'm saying, where did it start? It started at the ground level, it didn't start with the elected officials, that's what I'm trying to say. That if we're going, you know, if we're going to have consolidation in Camden County, okay, it should be at the elected officials. And I understand, Mayor, you know.
You're on eight minutes, so you're.
I'll wrap up real quick.
So come up with a point rather than a chance.
As I asked Haddon Township, would this governing body be, well, you think I'm grandstanding, I disagree, but you can reserve your right.
It's really nice that you're here.
Would this governing body be willing to put a public question on your ballot to the voters? Which state, that in the future, if the borough of Oakland decides to do any public safety consolidation or regionalization, that they would first need to seek approvals from the voters first? And I'll throw that out there to the council, the governing body of the town.
That's nothing that you can decide without serious discussions among yourselves.
Yeah, I say, you know, there, once again, here's a guy from outside, and no offense, but a guy from outside of Oakland who's trying to bring up these things on how we should govern our town. And I think we should talk about that, or not talk about that, we don't, that doesn't have to be, somebody make an issue like that, and we have to make that determination. I mean, that's why we're elected, is to make these decisions for our town. And if one guy doesn't like it, then all of a sudden, we have to put it out for public referendum. You guys can decide that, but, as I said, that's pretty much your time.
We don't have dialogue on the whole colonial thing, I'm just asking questions, I followed it from the beginning.
Any other?
Yes, answers.
Okay. So anybody else from the public would like to speak?
Is he on, or are you done?
He's up at the nine minutes and fifty-four seconds, I think we've doubled the time around it, I think it's, I think we're fine, I don't think you're going to get an answer to what you're asking. I'm not going to put it up for public referendum, I'm not. Now, whether anybody else wants to answer or not, that's fine, but we're moving on, so. Your name and.
My name is Shusen Deman, I work for Haddon Township Police Department. I've worked over thirteen years, or gone on thirteen, sorry, I hate public speaking.
Do you live in? You can sit on it, you don't have to stand either.
Sorry, just don't start taking me there.
Do you live in Haddon Township?
I do, I live in Haddon Township.
Okay.
All right, I understand the whole, the outsider coming in, the only reason I say that is I've helped police your town, I've made arrests in your town, I've handled calls in your town, I love Oakland, it's a great town, I have a lot of friends that live here. I just want to say that, you know, some of the concerns that come up with money and stuff like that, I just, you guys are heading down a slippery slope. And I understand the fact that, of course, I'm partial to what I'm a police officer, and I don't want to see that happen. However, you can't, you know, overlook the facts that somebody like Malley, somebody like Capelli, they were front runners for the county, they were front runners for it, they were on the paper, they were poster children for it. And now all of a sudden, they're telling you, no, 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 this colonial's not that. All right, well, what's going to happen when it turns into that? And you say, you're putting, I'm going to kind of jump around here, because I had a couple of thoughts here. As far as the money-wise for your town, the thirteen thousand dollars now, let's even say it does stay to that, it does stay that low, the other team comes, or the other department comes along, you pay the thirteen thousand dollars. Now, I hate to say this out loud, I love Mark, I have since he's been here, you know, he's a great guy. You made a comment during this meeting that, what if he had seven towns under his belt? Which leads me to believe that everybody's on the same page, that they're going to name somebody to run the colonial lines, it's going to happen. What if it's not Chief Moore? So if it's not Chief Moore, and then he returns, let's just say Lieutenant Salory, I don't know how that would work, I don't even know what the chief makes right now.
I don't even know.
If he dropped back down, let's just say for argument's sake, it's ten thousand dollars, I don't know what it is, I'm just throwing a number out there. Let's say he drops down ten thousand dollars, he's not retiring, he's staying with your department. Now, you're going to have somebody running this colonial, I'm willing to bet that running seven towns, I mean, that's going to be quite a hefty salary, I would say probably one-fifty-ish at the minimum. So now, you've, you know, when you were paying your chief, now you're ten thousand dollars down from that, how much percentage now do you have to pay for this new guy?
I can absolutely tell you, and it's not to cut you off or anything, I don't know all the numbers.
Right.
I'm crunching them all, I mean, listen, the simple fact is.
And I don't know the numbers either.
Yeah, seven chiefs, I mean, that's the idea to do the study, is to find out what it is.
Okay, so if this study does come down, who votes on who the chief is, or director?
I mean, we talked about that, as I said, that's one of the difficult parts about the study, is to say that, you know, there are seven public safety.
Right.
There has to be another committee, there has to be a charter then brought up, and there has to be a lot of stuff.
Right, so I mean, your vote is obviously going to be for your guy, just like every other town, you would assume is going to be.
No, I think they're going to see that our guy's better than all the other guys, and absolutely just can't get him, but.
But if they don't, are you prepared to spend that much more?
But once again, you're focusing on one aspect, it might come back to that study.
I understand that, but you brought it up and said that he could.
Well, you know, global domination has always been my goal.
Right, but ultimately.
One of the talent.
Ultimately, that is going to happen, we know that, you know that, they're ultimately going to do that. So let's, I know, I'm not, I know the entire study, and I know what it's going to do, nobody thought it was going to happen in Camden, and it did.
No, I think the study was, didn't it happen in, and the study was over in Camden, wasn't that the other way around?
As far with the study, the RFP.
And I saw how the chiefs were, I mean, I tried to go to the meeting with my chief, and when the Chiefs Association was blocked, my chief said, I can't go in, I can't cross that line, and I fully respected that. Talked to Joe Eisenhardt before the meeting, and went right afterwards to say, this will not happen, I just, I don't want to be associated with anything, whether you're going to be blocking out the guys who know more than me about it, why would I ever do that? I mean, that's just silly.
I just don't understand, especially with somebody like Malley and Capelli, I'm not trying to bash them, I mean, they are what they are. Malley ran his town to the ground, he bankrupted that town.
Well, let's not talk about Malley and how he ran it down, as I said, you know.
And these people are now, they were the front runners for the county, now they're the front runners for the colonial.
Yeah, it's funny, because everybody talks about, like you say, the county is, you know, is the evil entity, the evil empire, or Malley and Capelli is the, I mean, it's very easy to vilify people, and very, you know, and I'm sure.
But it's also very easy for them.
You're going to take some great quotes from this one and vilify me too, I mean, that's just the way it's going to go, I'm okay with that, you know. The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, I think we have a solid council to decide what's going to be here, we have these public discussions all the time. That are, you know, we were elected, and is every decision we're going to make the right decision? You know, if I made every decision correctly, I'd be doing something else, you know.
And I actually think it's good, with as many council members as you have, I think you get a lot more opinions, and I think that's probably better. Like I said, again, just trying to make you think that, and like this gentleman said too, even with the colonial, you're going to lose, you're going to lose your police department, it's going to happen. It's going to come down if this goes through, it's going to keep going, but it's going to be very difficult to stop it. And like I said, you're not saving any money.
We never said that, we never said that, so I think you're.
No, 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 I meant the study as far as.
Well, we were willing to do a study to just to be open-minded, I think that's the discussion about this study.
I guess my ultimate question is, are you really willing to spend thirteen thousand dollars for something you already know what the study's going to say?
No.
For the majority of it.
No, my gosh, you know, I.
As far as the study, wasn't there three bids?
I do studies all the time, right, that's what I'm paid for, to do these studies for pharmaceutical companies, and they don't know what, there's no foregone conclusion. I mean, if there was, why did they do studies if they already know the answer? And we come up with new things and show them what they don't know, that's why you do studies. That's something that actually, that Councilman Aaron said that I actually like, I mean, there's been hundreds of studies done, right? And are all of them taken? I'm not sure, I'd love to have access to some of these other studies to say, to pick and choose.
Of course.
I mean, and I'm not saying that we have to run down this path, it has to be now, if it's not right now, it's going to be right at some point, and all the stars will align. And I'd rather be better informed than have every one of these people better informed too.
The RFP, wasn't there three bids?
There were three.
Do you recall what they were?
So the cheapest one actually.
It's just they gave you the data.
And they decided that, and they made the recommendation to the group that says, you need something more than just this, it's not that, you know, it's a great number, but you're not going to get anything for it. The other guys were from California, they were a little bit more, and the idea was that they were going to do a lot of stuff from.
They're a reward group, California guys, ninety-eight thousand.
No, it's that they're from.
No, they're from California.
Oh, no, no, okay.
They're from Haddonfield.
They were the.
Two hundred.
Yeah, yeah, or they were way up there, that was the thing. So, I'm sorry, I get my studies wrong, but they were coming out, and I think that was the other thing too, was they were still coming out, it was the, the chief one was never coming through too.
Chief guys were not coming out, but California guys were using somebody here helping them with stuff.
Right, right.
The guy at Haddonfield was real high, they were just.
As I said, the whole idea was, you got to teach us what we don't know, only one guy in, you know, on council knows anything about law enforcement, you know.
I get that, but that, except, I mean, I don't want to hit my time, it's late, I'm sure everybody wants to get out of here, but.
You are rapidly approaching.
I mean, ultimately, like I said, you already know the money that you're going to spend. Truth be told, I could probably write out a study for you, put it in a sealed envelope, and when you get it and you open it, it's probably going to say roughly the same thing. All right, so.
Yeah, so here's a good question.
Regardless of how, how you merge together and how you put this money together, just in the chief position alone, if your chief wasn't the chief, you're going to lose money just there. Because you're going to have to pay for the new person, it's going to come out of your budget, it has to, whether it's a small percentage because of your, the size of demographics, however it works. So, and with that.
Did I understand that math right? If we take.
Percentage-wise, like if they take the six towns, much like the different study, and they said, okay, Oakland's going to pay fifteen percent, Collingswood's going to pay twenty-five percent to the salary of this person because of the size of their town, that's what I mean. Or is it going to be equal, is Oakland going to pay the same as Collingswood?
I don't, to be honest with you, I haven't got into that.
I know that, but I'm saying that, that's on the horizon, and that's going to come.
But the math doesn't, that math doesn't make sense, if I've got seven people that are going to share one guy, and we're sharing fifteen or, if I share sixty percent, it's still cheaper than what we're paying for our guy.
No, it's not, because you didn't lose him, he's still working here.
How do you know, well, first off, we talked about, nobody would ever lose their job on this, it would be through attrition.
Okay, so there's going to be a bigger guy with a higher salary that you're going to pay a percentage of. So even if you're newly appointed chief, and again, I don't know what he makes, but let's say it was a ten thousand dollar raise, he goes back down to his old position, so you get your ten thousand dollars back.
You're saying the whole thing is.
You're going to pay a lot more than ten thousand dollars to this new chief.
I think you missed the point of the study to say that, like, say we do this agreement, and this is how we see this going, you know, if he retires in seven years, the thought is that.
Well, then he's just going to be shorthanded.
We get into that. No, we then, through attrition, he leaves, right, somebody then gets promoted to a mid-position, but the chief, you know, we have a chief, then we go in and share that chief. No person was going to lose their job on this, it was never an intention for anyone to say.
Somebody's going to gain a job, there's going to be some type of director or some chief that's going to gain a job.
Right, one chief goes up, no chief loses their job.
That's it, that's if they take a chief from one of our departments.
Yeah, who knows, I mean, you're all speculating in that, and you're at the same point that I stopped him, and I don't want to be disrespectful to him either.
Here's my last thing. Basically, again, much like we can sit here and argue the fact, and you can say, we're, you know, we're making accusations and doing this. Any person that's running the department can tell you, or running the colonial lines, they can tell you guys anything they want. And unfortunately, I don't mean to say this in a rude way, neither Haddon Township, Oakland, Collingswood, none of our towns are big enough to stand up, we're going to have to do whatever they say. And if Oakland thinks that your vote is going to run this whole colonial, you guys are sadly mistaken. Same thing with Haddon Township, same thing with Collingswood, everybody, I'm sure, has been promised that you guys are going to be okay, we'll keep you guys, we'll help you guys out. Well, that's not going to work for everybody, there's going to be a lot of towns here who aren't going to have here.
Well, I shut you down, because your time, as I said, has gone over his time, but because.
Well, just something.
Your time is done, and at that point, I could say that, nobody's promised us anything, because this is, once again, you know, the guy's throwing stuff out there that you're going to stick in your head, just remember that nobody has promised anybody anything. It is seven towns that decided that we are stronger together than we are separate.
Same people who front run of the county police department.
It's funny that, I mean, you really have a bone against, about, against Capelli and.
Okay, so what happens if an RFP comes out, and they want to do a study to do to consolidate mayors?
Your time is done, sir, your time is done, I can still, I am expounding to the council now, okay? Your time is done, and I want, as I said, we're respectful too, it should have been five, I gave you ten, I gave John ten also. But I will say that, you know.
Talked through half of it.
So the thought being is, first off, does anybody else have a, Brett, would you like that? Okay, so at that, that, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Can I take it?
For a matter of contract.
So.
Oh, close meeting, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I haven't closed the meeting yet, at that point, but I will say that, you know, we gain a lot of, oh, yeah, yeah, do I have a motion to, we did that, and do I have all in favor? Close, okay, means that close the vote. So, to say that, you know, it's being focused on one person, and obviously, it is, if Collingswood was not in this, would this be the same discussion? I mean, it's definitely vilified one mayor, and you say that they run the Collingswood into the town, into the ground, I just think there's a lot of things that people are saying that, you know, you just need to take a step back, breathe, and see what good things are coming out of things, you can always hear the evil things, let's not always be, you know, this is how we get you not to go somewhere, is we make you afraid of it, and then we tell you who's the blame. And that's what's happened, and I think we just need to take that out of the equation, take a step back and say, what's good for Oakland? What part of the study, if we want to do, go to the study, if not, what else do we want to do, let's look at other shared stuff.